Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll. Okay, first up is public comment. The Penridge School Board welcomes public comment. According to Policy 903, we remind everyone of the following. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the Presiding Officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer rather than to individual Board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments to protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community. The Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals such as students or district employees privately to the Superintendent or other appropriate administrators or Board members, or to communicate with the Board and Superintendent privately by sending an email to PSDSchoolBoard@Penridge.org. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. Any comments from guests? Okay, seeing none. Okay, next up is the President's Report. I only have a couple of things for this evening. One, Mrs. Cullen and I had the privilege of attending the PSBA conference and we, you know, I think even aside from the presentations which had valuable information across the Board, just interacting with, you know, other school Board members and administrators from across the state and hearing all of their different ideas was really helpful. And I know Mrs. Cullen and I have brought some really great ideas back to the district for the district to use. We had really great presenters. One of the themes was safety. There were discussions about dual enrollment, you know, improving individualized education. We had several good presenters, but I think I can speak for Mrs. Cullen, myself, and probably everyone there by saying that one of the presentations we had was the most powerful presenter I've ever seen in my entire life. Daryl Scott, who's the, he's the parent of a child who was killed in Columbine. And he does an amazing, amazing presentation. And just to learn about how this young girl's life is changing the world is phenomenal and it's something we'd really like to bring back to Penridge. It was, it was, poor, poor Dr. Price called me right after I walked out of that meeting and I was so emotional, I couldn't even talk. So I'm fine, it's finally been enough days that I think we can talk, but it was, it was really truly amazing. So I'm really thankful that we had that opportunity. Another, another thing I just wanted to note, there's legislation now that pushes off the, I think it passed the House, it's still waiting to pass the Senate, but pushing back the graduation requirement for keystones back another year and then also leaving additional options open for graduation requirements that you wouldn't necessarily need the keystone, that there's other things that would be in place of that. So that's something to watch. And there's also legislation to allow kids to carry sunscreen at schools because we know that's an issue, so something else to kind of keep an eye on. That's all I have. Next up is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I want to start with some academic celebrations this evening. First, we, Penridge had four students who were among and achieved commended status in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. We want to congratulate Nicole Isler, I'm sorry, Nicholas Isler, Thomas Geiger, Alana Lee, and David Scavuzzo, who were among the top 50,000 scores from among 1.6 million. So I did the math for you. They were in the top 3.1% of all the students who took the 2017 PSAT National Merit Qualifying Test last year as juniors. We're going to have an opportunity to meet those students at the December Board Meeting, but it was such an accomplishment that I wanted to mention it as many times as possible. Secondly, last week, we inducted 108 students into the National Honor Society for their scholarship, their service, their leadership, and their character. They heard from two speakers that night who stressed kindness and perseverance to those future leaders. It was a beautiful ceremony. You can see a complete list of the names on the website. I'd like to recognize Penn Central Math Teacher, Ms. Sandy Miller, who presented for Penridge School District at a national conference of Teachers of Mathematics, which is the NCTM. She presented a workshop to a packed house on several creative activities that helped develop a growth mindset among students who are learning math. I want to congratulate Sellersville Elementary. Sellersville has been named a Title I Distinguished School based on its outstanding performance in the English Language Arts and Math PSSA and the Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System known as P-VAS. Only 158 Title I Schools representing the top 5% in the state of Pennsylvania for each category receive that recognition. So a huge congratulations to Principal Sarah Baker and to the entire staff for their hard work. We also had 49 students who were inducted into the International Thesbian Society Troop. This honor is bestowed upon any student who has achieved 100 or more hours of work in theater arts and related disciplines. So congratulations to those 49 students. We also have two students who have recently achieved the rank of Eagle Scout and they'll be honored at the Eagle Scout Court of Honor ceremonies that are held next month. First is Andreas Hunter Skopis, whose Eagle Service Project included several improvements to Papa Joe's Grove. I learned a lot about Papa Joe that I didn't know. Behind the Sellersville Fire Company Building, he installed a backdrop and a bench for event photos, planted trees, added horseshoe pits, and upgraded the kitchen building for event catering. Andreas has served as a patrol leader, a troop guide, a troop spirit guide, and has been on the staff of Camp Akonikin Scout Reservation for a few summers. He intends to become a commercial driver after graduation in June. The other Eagle Scout is Matthew Milton Cedar, whose service project involved installing a flagpole and two waste stations at Suplee Park in Dublin. Matthew has served as a patrol leader, den chief, and troop historian for two years. He plans on attending the Rochester Institute of Technology to study 3D design after graduation in June. And now a couple athletic achievements. First, a huge congratulations to four teams who have qualified for the playoffs and will begin play this week. As we speak, our field hockey team, is that true? Springford is competing against Springford tonight? I got confused as whether it was tonight or tomorrow. It is tonight. So the field hockey team is at Springford tonight in District 1 Playoffs. The boys' soccer team will be home against the Shamani tomorrow at 7:00 PM. The girls' soccer team will be home Thursday at 7:00 PM against a team that is still being determined. The girls' water polo will be at Governor Mifflin on Tuesday. And the boys' water polo will be at Albright College to play Exeter and that will also be on Tuesday. Please be looking for those results and cheer those young men and women on in the playoffs. In other sports news, the girls' soccer coach, Aubrey Anderson, won her 100th game and her teams are now 120 and 13 in the six years that she's been coaching since 2012. The boys' soccer team, if you got a chance to see some of the pictures, got to play a game against CB West at Talon Energy Stadium, which is the home of the Philadelphia Union. Got to speak to a couple of the boys and they really enjoyed the experience of playing in such an amazing setting and such a large venue down there in Philadelphia. Congratulations to our quarterback, Zach Cantor, who broke the single-season touchdown passing record at Penridge with 17. And he still has two more games in the playoffs to go. And with 126 total tackles, linebacker Shane Hartzell now holds the school record for a single season and he's only a sophomore, so we're guessing it will be broken next week. Our next presentation in the piece of my Superintendent's Report was something that I saw on Twitter Friday night. I was at home and was looking at some Twitter posts and saw some posts that celebrate everything that is right with high school athletics in general, but also with the Penridge Field Hockey Team. Being a Penridge athlete often means to the coaches and to the young men and young women that it's more than just competing. All of our teams find other ways to give back to the community, whether it's through pink-out events, whether it's clothing drives, food collections, going to elementary schools, there are lots of activities. But for the Pen, Penridge High School Girls Lacrosse Team, it meant traveling to South Philadelphia on a really cold Thursday night in October to share their skills with athletes from Philly Girls in Motion, which is an organization that teaches its members healthy habits through sports and other related activities. Philly Girls in Motion is part of a newly revised Philadelphia Youth Sports Collaborative. Tonight, we've asked Coach Karen Schnur and most of her team members to come with us tonight and share some thoughts about the experience. So Coach Schnur, if you would, please.
Thank you, Dr. Boland. So this is my fifth year coaching here at Penridge and for five years now, we have been working with the Philly Girls in Motion. To just add a little bit of that backdrop before the girls speak, it's long to our bus ride with 40 girls on the bus singing and cheering and getting ready. And when we pull up, our bus can barely fit down the street, but our bus drivers make it. And we get off and we are in the outfield in a softball field. And it's very tiny, very hard lighting, and a bunch of second through eighth graders are all there patiently waiting our arrival and just very excited for the hour and a half practice that'll be held. So every fall, winter, and spring, we try to get together with the girls from Philly Motion. We try to go down there in the fall and winter. And then in the spring, we host a clinic with our deep run trailblazers. So I thought it would be nice to hear from our four seniors about their experiences with Philly Motion. They're a little nervous. They're a little nervous.
Okay, hello, my name is Jenna Lund, I'm a senior here at Penridge High School and I've been attending this fellowship with the Philly Girls for four years now and each year I learn something new about this lacrosse program and being a teammate. There's so much more in playing this amazing sport. It's about growing up, helping everyone and your teammates in learning dedication and desire. Philly Motion has shown me that you need to work hard for any dream you have. This experience is not only great for our team, but also great for the Philly Motion Girls. It helps the little girls grow as lacrosse players and helps them become stronger and more helpful leaders. Every year I look forward to going to Philly and it's always so much fun. It is always nice to see the same faces at Philly Motion as it is the girls are going to learn more and have fun. But it's also really nice to see new faces taking on the challenge of the new sport. So to start off our trip to Philly, we all get new shirts. This is our shirt this year and they always have a saying on them, so this year it's "Accountability, I'm All, I'm In." Then on the bus ride we jam onto our favorite music from throwbacks to rap songs to country songs. And once we arrive in Philly, we begin our partner passing. And it's always nice partner passing because we get to learn more with the little girls and connect one on one with them and just connect with the sport we both love so much. And we start stretching and begin our fun night. So this year I had the opportunity of running the tax station with a freshman Amelia Lockery and we did one-on-ones, give-and-goes, and practiced with shooting. It is always amazing to see their smiles when they score a goal. It always makes me so happy to know that I'm making an impact to these children's lives for their, as their love of their sport increases every goal and every catch they made. At the end of the clinic, we played the crowd pleaser, Steal the Bacon. We break up into two teams and it becomes one very competitive game. It warms my heart to see the girls working so hard while laughing at the same time. In that moment, it shows that it's not always about winning, but loving the sport we put so much time into. But of course, there is a winning aspect. During the Steal the Bacon game, the girls worked so hard to win and they're all cheering so loud for their teammates. Our team gets so involved and it's so amazing to watch. Our team is cheering and giving everyone corners and it makes the little girls feel like the work they're putting in is paying off. Although my team did lose this year sadly, I made a bet with the other team that if I, we'll also have to do 20 push-ups, so thanks to Coach Sher for posting that on Twitter. Also, at the end of the clinic, all the girls want to take pictures with us, add us on Snapchat and talk about all their boy drama and it's so cute. It is always nice to see how comfortable the girls feel with us because it just makes me feel so happy. And by the end of the night, the girls are always smiling, laughing, having a good time playing the sport they love. And on the bus ride home, we eat our Philly Salt Pretzels and our favorite chocolate milk with Coach Will. And all Philly Motion has been one of the best experiences I've ever been to. It has taught me that playing the sport I love is about being a teammate, growing up, and learning dedication and desire. From starting playing lacrosse as a freshman year to now, I've grown so much as an individual and a teammate and I would like to think that we're helping the Philly Motion Girls do the same. I thank Coach Sher, Coach Will, and Coach Lockery for giving us the opportunity to play with the Philly Motion Girls and always making this trip one of the most fun events we do every year. And also I'd like to make my teammates feel making this experience so much fun, especially the bus rides.
I think Jenna said it really well. My name's Avery Miners and my voice sounds like this because of Philly Motion, because of the Steal the Bacon. If you don't remember me, I've been playing on the varsity team since freshman year and last year I got the opportunity as a junior to be captain. And this has to do with Philly Motion because when you're on the varsity team as a freshman, you don't really know what your teammates have, well, you know, on the other classmates because you grew up with them. So it's kind of hard balancing and being thrown right into that. And I think Philly Motion, like, gave a great team bonding opportunity to each and every one of us. Not only that, but I didn't ever think I'd be captain, being the captain, yet I'm thrown into this and Coach Schnur, Coach Lockery, and Coach Will gives us the opportunity to run this for us, to have the ability to be the coaches, to show our leadership. Hannah and I, we ran a defensive drill and we had the time of our lives. We were cheering on the girls, telling them what to do, and they just look at us and they say, "All right, girls, this is what I need to get done, do it." So it feels really good to be treated as an adult and to get that leadership position. And I can't thank them enough for giving us that. And I wouldn't necessarily call this experience volunteering because volunteering, you're genuinely giving. And here, we're definitely getting, we're getting team bonding. We get two hours on a bus ride with a bunch of our friends, like, that is so nice. And each and every year, they do a great job of providing us food, which is out of their pocket, providing us snacks, and it just makes you want to go. It's an amazing experience. But Philly Motion, it's so great. You get a bond with these girls. I don't even want to call them these girls because there's so much more to us. I got there and Coach Schnur looked at me and she goes, "Avery, really, Charlotte's not here." Which a year before, we dance battled, some may say I lost. I didn't, just to bring on the record. It's just great seeing the same faces and knowing that these people are so careful, like, "Hey, big step, do this," where you're like, "Amelia, do that." So it just makes such a difference for you. And it's awesome. And then at the end, you always play Steal the Bacon. And I'm almost an adult, almost 18 years old, and I'm still smiling when I say that because it's so fun. Even all of us get so pumped, like, riled up and it's just a great experience. At the end, it is hard because you have to say your goodbyes. And besides, it's in the picture, you feel so good about yourself when all the little girls are like, "Can we get a picture with you?" And you're like, "Yeah, yes." And it just, you feel like a pastor, it's awesome. They always ask, they're like, "Oh, when will you be back next year?" Or, "When will you be back next?" And, you know, the coaches do this great job of doing it throughout the year. We go there, they go here. And I'm just happy enough that you guys approved this for us to go on the bus, go down to Philly. And I'm so glad you gave us the time to speak about it because you don't know how much this means to us and I know it means stuff to them, but I'm pretty sure it means more to us. So thank you and thank you to all the coaches that let this happen. End of tape.
Hi, I'm Hannah Preston, I'm also a senior and I have been a four-year varsity player. And Philly Motion means so much to us as a team. It's so special to be able to keep this ongoing relationship with all these girls. So, but two hours away from us and know that every time we go down there, they're excited to see us. We're excited to see them. And it's just, it's so fun to be able to teach them something that we've learned and pass on, what we love doing. And I also think that Philly Motion really speaks to what we value as a team because it's so much more than just playing lacrosse and being a good teammate. And Coach Schnur is so good about teaching us, teaching us these values and knowing that we can give back to others. But even then, we're getting so much back from these girls. I love how much Schnur gets into this and wants us to be there and it means a lot having that support and motivation to go. And I just, I love getting to play Steal the Bacon. My team won this year, sorry about that. But walking away from the clinic with the girls and not having a voice, it just, that sounds kind of bad, but it feels so good knowing that we are loved so much down there and that they're so excited to see when we're coming back next.
Okay, I'm Alexa Machado and I'm also a senior and I've definitely loved doing this every single year. Schnur always says that this is her favorite, like, one of her proudest moments of being a coach is to see us interact with them, but honestly, I think I can speak on behalf of all the team. This is one of the most fun nights of the whole season and I've done it for three years and I've loved every single second of it. It brings me so much joy to see what we can bring to them and it feels like we can make a difference in their lives because their resources are so limited, like Schnur talked about in the beginning. We really can give them, like, personalized coaching and, like, just being there for them because sometimes they don't have that. And it's just really fun. And, whoa, I think Avery said that you bond with them and you know these girls. I've had all three years, these two girls, Annabelle and Penny, I've loved them and we've, they're great lacrosse players and they're great girls all together. And that night, I actually got to meet their parents. And parents wanted to thank me and wanted to thank our whole team just for coming down there all the time. And they said that I impacted their kids' lives and that they wanted to be better. But I literally told them that they've impacted my life and our team's life so much more because you learn so much from just being down there and you learn to appreciate and you learn how to be a teammate and to bond with them. So I just want to thank you guys for letting us come to talk about it because it is so important to talk about it. And, yeah, we love you.
Let's thank the girls and the coaches for this. Group photo, Mr. Ferry?
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your amazing experience and what you're all are doing. It's amazing.
And if you haven't seen the videos, you should because I'm not sure, there are two videos. I'm not sure if they cheer louder when there's like this fourth grade girl who scores a goal and like the place goes nuts, or when Jenna finishes her 20th push-up. I'm not sure which one's the louder cheer, but they both were excellent. So, thank you guys for coming. I want to provide two updates tonight. The first is an update on the graduation venue survey and establish some next steps. The wonderful news is that there were over 1,800 students and over 1,800 parents who completed the graduation venue survey. I'm in the process of reading more than 1,000 comments that were also left as part of those 3,600 survey votes. So the next steps will, in the next week or so, I'll be producing an executive summary that will include the vote totals as well as a list of themes gleaned from the surveys. That executive summary as well as the raw data. The raw data will have to be in two files because the students and the parents took the survey on a different platform. So there'll be an executive summary for those who just want the 30,000-foot view and then there'll be the raw data for the people who want to read the 1,000 comments themselves. And that will be posted on the website and an email will be sent to inform families that up. The members of the Cabinet will meet with the high school administration to review that data and prepare a recommendation for the school board. And that recommendation will be presented at the November 5th Activities Committee. So be looking for that email around the executive summary and the raw data next week. My final item is to present an update on the Comprehensive Plan for the years 2019 through 2022. The Comprehensive Plan is a document that provides a listing of the large areas of emphasis across the district through a three-year time period. The purpose of the Comprehensive Plan, according to the Pennsylvania Department of Education website, is comprehensive planning is a web-based framework for thoughtful, data-driven, and research-based district and school planning. Comprehensive planning facilitates, and this is my emphasis added because these are the parts of the program that I think are the strongest, comprehensive planning facilitates communication and collaboration, promotes shared practices and resources, and ensures that every stakeholder is working towards common goals. It is a state requirement that it is done every three years in all school districts in Pennsylvania. The collaborative process that includes all stakeholders in the district was facilitated this year by Mrs. Joanne Pirati, who is the Director of Strategic Services in the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and she does all of the Comprehensive Plans in Bucks County and many in Montgomery County. There were 48 team members and they represented students, parents, community members, business owners, teachers, administrators, and support staff. The timeline that has already occurred, in April, this group of 48 members met to discuss the three main goal areas that you'll hear about tonight and establish some overviews. In the summer, the draft plan was developed and the group came back together in September for a final discussion of the draft plan. Tonight, obviously, is the public presentation of that plan. And for the month of November, the plan will be posted on the district website for public review, which is required by the law. On December 3rd, it will be on the Board Agenda for Approval and then Submittal, if approved, on December 4th to them. I have asked tonight Dr. Kathy Shide, Ms. Diane Miller, and Dr. Sherry Wyorka, who would present on the three goal areas tonight. We're going to start with Dr. Shide.
Thank you, Dr. Boland. So I will be reviewing goal number one, enhance teaching, learning, and innovation. So strategy number one is institute a five-year curriculum renewal process. And what that is, it's comprehensive evaluation of each district program content, both core and elective, the electives. And it will be phased in according to the four phases. Phase one will be a program evaluation and a needs assessment, which we typically do here at Penridge, through program improvement. Phase two will be the implementation and revision monitoring of the curriculum. Phase three will continue to make revisions, but will fully implement. And phase four will be a monitoring for implementation fidelity. Strategy two, institute curriculum mapping across all disciplines. Fortunately for the Penridge district, school district, we will have a speaker, actually she's an internationally known guru on curriculum mapping, who will be working with curriculum writers this Thursday that include administrators and teachers alike, Dr. Heidi Hayes Jacobs, and we're very excited about that. We will, that is the professional development, or at least part of it, to the curriculum writers on curriculum mapping implementation. And basically what that is, is we are guided by four essential questions when we are mapping. What will students need to know and be able to do? How will we know that students have learned? What will we do when they haven't learned? And what will we do when we know they've already learned? We will be implementing the curriculum maps. When we are completed, they will be rigorous, relevant, guaranteed, and viable. Strategy three, ensure growth of all students. At every school in Penridge, we have a number of different teams who get together to study students, what they are doing and what they may not be doing and how we can help them. We are creating the standardized name of child study teams at all schools. They'll meet regularly to review student progress across all the grade levels. We will be establishing and have already begun that, roles and responsibilities. We will be looking at baseline data based on student progress. The whole goal is to develop individual action plans that are based on research strategies to support the students. And then we will monitor their progress on a four to six-week basis in order to document the effectiveness or ineffectiveness of interventions. So we will either continue with the intervention, the intervention will have worked, or we will recommend a modification to meet the needs of the students. For professional development, we will be, we will continue to provide research-based interventions for students and help teachers provide the professional development so they understand why we are using particular interventions and the best way to use them with individual students. We will be prioritizing professional learning development needs through the examination of student performance on a variety of assessments. We have and will continue to create a professional development yearly calendar that allows for personalized professional learning that meets the specific needs and requests of the professional staff. Our goal is to build the capacity of staff to become teacher leaders, to be facilitators of collegial professional learning opportunities, to support the diverse needs of all of our students. Strategy four is to prepare all students for college, career, and citizenship readiness. I will be working with the Pupil Services Department, and you'll hear more from Dr. Wyorka, to develop a guidance counseling curriculum. We will be studying career pathways as a learning design for Pen Ridge High School. And I do want to say, we probably will not be limiting to the high school, but we are beginning our study there. We will create a school business leaders forum for the purpose of connecting students to real-world learning opportunities. And we will evaluate current curricula for opportunities to embed financial literacy topics into existing courses, which really is the skill development, the skills to be able to handle your own finances. And we will strengthen and promote student opportunities through the Upper Bucks Technical School and the Bucks County Community College. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to present goal number two, which is the technology goal of promote effective technology using appropriate resources. I co-chair this goal with Mr. Schumdauer. I threw the short end of the stick and I got to do the presentation again. So we broke down the goal into two different strategies. The first is to improve and maintain access and reliability of the network and the infrastructure. So what this really means is as we increase the number of devices in the schools, we need to make sure that we have accessibility for all the devices throughout all the buildings. We already have the one-to-one devices at the high school and the access points pretty much under control. So now it's time to move on our sights onto the middle schools and into the elementary schools. And the access not only is in the classrooms, but it's in the conference rooms and the common spaces as well to make sure that if the students or the teachers are using their laptops in the libraries or in the cafeterias or in the gyms, that we do have adequate coverage. One of the other action steps under this strategy would be to provide a secure but open internet access to building users who are non-district employees. We are already testing, piloting a public network throughout the high school and throughout the district administration office. And then we'll look to, as we keep monitoring network usage, we'll look to open that up in the other buildings as well. Other things that fall under this strategy that have to do with the access and reliability of the network, we want to put together a detailed, formalized disaster recovery plan. This not only means that we would have a formal plan in place, but we want to be able to test the plan. So we want to make sure that we have everything in place so if we do ever suffer some type of a data disaster, whether it's a system disaster or heaven forbid, some type of natural disaster, that we can get our systems back up and running quickly and effectively. So that means, as I said, not only coming up with the plan, but actually testing the plan as well. So going through some live testing with that. We want to start to evaluate the available technologies pertaining to firewalls and securities and filtering. Our solution, our current solution is entering its sixth year. So there's been a lot of new technology obviously introduced within the last six years. So we want to make sure that our firewall is up to date and the filtering solution that we have, a lot of the solutions are, can be housed on one device now. We have to filter because of our one-to-one. We have to make sure that we're filtering not only onsite, but off-site as well with the mobile client, which we currently have. But we want to make sure that we're providing the best filtering that we can for our students. And then the other thing that we'll be looking at is pertaining to our storage and our backup solution. Again, this is six-year technology that we currently have in place. So we're looking at more maybe of a hybrid solution between some on-prem and some cloud-based solutions for storage and for backup, as well as for the DR solution as well. We'll be looking to leverage the cloud as much as we can. Strategy number two is use appropriate technology to support the focus of digital-age learning. We started last year, so 17, 18 school year, we started with providing laptops at the sixth-grade level of all the middle schools. We expanded that this year into, we moved the sixth-grade devices up to the seventh grade, and we pumped in new devices into the sixth grade this year. The students currently keep those devices at school. So we'll be taking a look at how, if we are fortunate enough to expand to the eighth graders, how will that change a little bit? What will the middle school expectations be, especially as we now start to integrate Canvas at the middle school levels? So we'll be taking a look at that. We'll be forming a committee. We'll be working very closely with the administration, not only district administration, but the school's administrations as well. We'll also be looking at expanding the availability of technology to the elementary schools to make sure the students have adequate access to technology. Right now, they're at a one-to-eight ratio. So the plan is to formulate a committee and start to look at what we can do in the elementary levels to make sure that the students have the technology available to them and to see how we can modernize that a little bit at the elementary levels. We currently have some of the traditional labs and they have older equipment. So again, we'll formulate the committee and we'll start to see how we can move forward the next couple of years and kind of remake some of the technology in the elementary schools more of a maker space, more of a creative space for the younger students as well. That all kind of plays into expanding interactive technology tools to encourage that classroom collaboration and kind of what the new classroom kind of looks like. We'll be taking a look at the wireless projection solutions. There's also interactive projectors out on the market. There's interactive flat panels. So there's a lot of different technology out there that really focuses the curriculum and focuses more on the student and the teacher being at the center of the classroom rather than, you know, some of the traditional ways of delivering. And then the last thing that we have up here is to evaluate opportunities to partner with local businesses to provide work-based technology experiences to Pen Ridge students and staff. And this, that last bullet point came out of our second meeting with the focus group. So it's to try and pool maybe on some of the great experience that some of our business owners, local businesses have in the area. Maybe, I'm not quite sure what this is going to look like, you know, whether it would be some kind of shadowing, capabilities, job shadowing. We can have, you know, some of the local business owners on site. We'll have to see with that can what we can roll and progress into that part of the action steps. And that's goal number two. Hey, good evening. I'm here to present our final goal, goal number three, to ensure the well-being of students and staff. So this was where we started on April 10, and some of the themes that came out of that meeting from all of the participants, looking at social-emotional learning, inclusion for our special education students, our bullying efforts, our student assistance program, drug and alcohol awareness, and physical facility safety. So we developed two strategies that fall under this goal, but one looking at physical and facility safety nets, and the second looking at social-emotional learning safety nets. So under strategy one, the physical facility safety nets, we're looking at enhancing peer conflict activities, looking at bullying, harassment prevention education, and building our facility's safety and security. We have five action steps under this goal. Our first action step is to review our peer mediation and bullying curriculum resources, develop an implementation plan that's appropriate across all grades. The second one is to implement our student assistance program across all buildings. Right now, we have it at the middle school and the high school. We're starting it at elementary this year. So we want to make sure that we're implementing that with fidelity across all of our buildings so that we can assist students to overcome any barriers that they may have with mental health issues, alcohol, drugs, and make sure that they are successful and able to remain in school. Our third action step is to conduct a needs assessment and implementation plan to address our facility safety and security items. And we have listed here some of the things that we need to look at as part of that needs assessment. The possibility of additional staffing, including security, director of safety, implementing, possibly implementing more use of our student ID badges, looking at our use of Raptor, increasing unannounced building searches, security at football games, building access across all of our buildings, and our student cell phone policies. The next action step is to implement a drug and alcohol awareness program for staff and students that includes the things that we have listed here. So we want to make sure that they have factual data about what substance abuse is, that they understand the warning signs, and how alcohol and specific drugs might affect their mind and their body, the consequences of addiction, and how and why substances are abused. And then we also want to implement a district-wide threat assessment team. The purpose of the threat assessment team would be to identify student threats to commit a violent act, look at the seriousness of those threats, and then develop intervention plans that protect potential victims and address any underlying problems or conflict as we learn about that behavior. Strategy two is looking at our social-emotional learning safety nets for our students and our staff. So we want to help students build social skills, understand and appreciate diversity, have acceptance of all, and make sure that we're analyzing all of that data so that we continue to improve those efforts. So we have two action steps here. The first is to continue our implementation of our social-emotional learning curriculum that has been in place for a number of years now. Make sure that we have, are implementing and have activities across all grades. And some of the items that we're going to be looking at are increasing the opportunities for students to practice positive social interactions, make sure that we have appropriate suicide prevention awareness activities, social media awareness activities, more peer mediation opportunities for students, working with our teachers about sensitivity awareness activities, and then looking at stress-relieving and mindfulness activities for students and staff. And our final action step is looking at our least restrictive environment that we provide for our students with special education needs. So we want to look at where we've been in the past, what that data shows about our inclusion opportunities, and then look at what we can do to improve our inclusion opportunities, both teaching models, student mentoring activities, so that we can support students that have those special education needs. Thank you.
Dr. Scheid, Ms. Miller, Dr. Wyorka, thank you very much for that presentation and the overview. If you are in this room and you were involved in some way in the Comprehensive Plan process, could you please stand up so we can recognize you for your work through these months? Come on, cabinet, stand up, please. Board members, stand up, please. There are multiple people who were involved. Let's thank them for their work in the process.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Cormac. Next up is our student liaison report.
So the Student Council just had like one of the biggest events of the whole entire year, of the homecoming weekend, where we helped lead the parade down Seventh Street. And we also had the football game that night where we announced the Queen. And then we also had the dance as well that weekend at the game, or at that Saturday night. So another big event at the homecoming weekend was P Block sold T-shirts, and they raised money for Minithon, another huge, big club in the school. Student Council will be sending eight ki-, or yeah, 12 kids to the PASC Student Council Conference at Cedar Crest High School, where eight girls and four boys will be attending. And another big event that's coming up in the Student Council is our Fall Breakfast, which will be happening right before the Thanksgiving break. So we have a lot of exciting things coming up for the school, as well as Student Council and other clubs. It's a very exciting time of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the consent calendar. I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through I. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Kildare. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine-zero. And next up are the committee reports, activities. Ms. Cullen?
Thank you. The activities committee did not meet in October. The next meeting, as Dr. Bolton mentioned earlier, is Monday, November 5th. And Dr. Bolton, actually, will we be having that meeting in the room over there, or do you anticipate having an audience that we might need it over here?
I think we'll be okay to hold it over there. We can hold 50 to 60 people in that room.
So it will be over in the district office? Thank you, Ms. Cullen. Next up is curriculum. Ms. Cullen?
Thank you. Okay, so at our October 8th curriculum meeting, we had some good discussion on a number of topics, and we have a few motions to present tonight. The first one is a motion to approve the following curriculum improvement proposals: the AP Environmental Science textbooks, the seventh-grade World Geography and Culture textbooks, and the seventh-grade World Geography and Culture atlases.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Cullen, seconded, who seconded? Mrs. Dolan? Questions or comments from board members? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine-zero.
Thank you. The next motion is to approve the following curriculum developmental proposals. Grades 11 and 12, Artistic Woodworking III. Grades 11 and 12, Level 2 Honors Artistic Woodworking III and Wood Manufacturing IV. Retroactive Honors Credit for Woodworking III and IV. And grades 10 through 12, Chamber Orchestra Class.
Moved by Mrs. Cullen. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine-zero.
The next motion is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Pen Ridge School District and the Head Start pre-K and private agencies.
Moved by Mrs. Cullen. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Sorry, aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries nine-zero.
The next motion is to accept nine mini-grants in the amount of $7,232 from the Pen Ridge Community Educational Foundation.
Moved by Mrs. Cullen. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that this has been going on for a number of years.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that this has been going on for a number of years, and I want to thank the PCEF. I believe tonight's total is among the highest, if not the highest, in all those years, not only in terms of the number of grants that they made, but in terms of the amount of the individual grants.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I want to also add my thanks to the Educational Foundation. These are grants that allow teachers to look for innovative practices in their classrooms. So this is going to be impacting nine classrooms where teachers had a really wonderful idea, and this money's going to fund that, so we're going to impact lots of students through that. So I just really appreciate the work of the foundation.
Is the information, I don't see it on the printed-out agenda. I can describe what some of them are since this is kind of rolling into the PCEF report. But we had grants for coding bots, more coding bots, another grant for coding, there's a grant for Sellersville Elementary School to have workstations, flexible seating for Dibler, life skills trips for the high school, instruments for Sellersville Elementary, video design, a video design grant for Siler, and a puppet-making grant for Dibler.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And I'll just remind everyone that that money comes from their fundraisers, so it helps for everyone to be engaged in those fundraisers and participate, and then that money comes back to the schools. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, thank you. The next curriculum meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 12.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Facilities, Mrs. Dolan?
I have anything to mention after our next meeting. The first thing is a motion to approve bus rats and stops for the 2018-2019 school year as developed by the Transportation Fund.
Moved by Mrs. Dolan, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
The next thing I have is a motion to approve design development, project documentation, and bidding for the elementary school's large space air conditioning project.
Moved by Mrs. Dolan, do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
My last item for the night is approval of obsolete items, and I would make a motion to approve items A through F.
Moved by Mrs. Dolan, do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
And the last thing at the next facilities meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 13, and that will be over at the district office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolan. Next up is the finance report. The finance committee met on October 9th. I'm going to make a motion to approve contracts A through O. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 accelerated budget opt-out resolution. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? I'm just going to, I'd just like to share that it's guaranteeing that we will not be raising taxes above the Act 1 index. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next up is the IU report. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit Board met on October 16th, and here are some highlights that were shared. They set up, the Bucks County IU set up a day on the Hill recently where they took our superintendents, including Dr. Mark Kaufman, the executive director, Dr. Rachel Holler, Director of Programs and Services, and Rebecca Roberts-Mallemis, the deputy executive director. They were accompanied by all of the superintendents and met with Governor Wolf and Secretary Rivera and a number of other local and state legislatures, legislators on some legislative issues that affect education. The Bucks County IU is hosting an indoor craft fair on Saturday, October 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's free admission and parking, so start your holiday shopping now. School Psychology Awareness Week this year is November 12th to 16th. The purpose is to bring awareness to the different roles that school psychologists play in supporting students of all ages and abilities. This year's theme is Unlock Potential, Find Your Password. The theme builds on the idea that students are constantly using passwords to unlock aspects of their lives, such as gaming, phones, devices. With this idea in mind, we as educators can discover the password needed to unlock skills or characteristics in our students. School psychologists can support the educational team in unlocking student potential. The 19th Annual Secondary Transition Options and Resource Fair is upcoming. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit, along with the Transition Coordinating Council of Bucks County, are hosting their 19th Annual Secondary Transition Options and Resource Fair on Thursday, November 1st. This unique event focuses on providing information on support services, specialty programs, employment support agencies, colleges, and technical trade schools to transition age students with special needs. Join us from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit located at 705 North Shady Treat Road in Doylestown, PA. Attendance and parking are both free, and light snacks will be provided. Transition programs focus on students between the ages of 14 to 21. However, all students with special needs are more than welcome to attend. We especially welcome and encourage attendance by students, families, over 40 organizations, academic institutions, community agencies, and vendors are registered to attend and share their information with these students, parents, families, and educators. Operation Safe Stop is a proactive approach to educate the motoring public that passing a stop school bus when children are loading or unloading is both dangerous and illegal. Law enforcement agencies, school transportation providers, pupil transportation associations, and PennDOT have combined their efforts to raise public awareness about the potential consequences and reduce the occurrence of illegal school bus passes. Over the past 21 years, PennDOT, along with the law enforcement agencies and pupil transportation associations, has conducted Operation Safe Stop. On Wednesday, October 24th, the 22nd Annual Operation Safe Stop will occur on this day. We hope that all school districts will participate by having their drivers document any illegal passes occurring on their routes during the day. If possible, the driver should get identifying information regarding the vehicle and file it with local authorities. The Gwendolyn Mercy University and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit have signed an agreement that gives Bucks IU employees, as well as all teachers and auxiliary staff of the IU's and the 13 sending districts and three career and technical centers, the opportunity to pursue a higher education degree from Gwendolyn Mercy at a discounted tuition rate. Just two more things. Sensory Storytime, the Bucks County Free Library is gearing up to once again offer sensory storytimes. Attention all Bucks IU staff and Penrich families, if you have any families or therapists that are looking for an inclusive and welcoming space for their kids, we'd love to see them all at the libraries. It lists out, they list out all of the different libraries, but here in Percasi, it's the first three Mondays of every month from 11:30 to 12:30. And Quakertown also has it, the first three Tuesdays of every month from 10:30 to 11:30. And the last thing is stockings for soldiers. With the level of success they experienced with their stockings for soldiers project last year, they stuffed 300 stockings and sent 82 boxes of goodies, which totaled over $1,400 in shipping. They are starting super early this year in order to have enough, to have everything organized and give enough time to support the various grants they will need. They're expecting this year to be even bigger and better. If you have anything to contribute, and it needs to be contributed by November 9th, Friday, November 9th. And they ask for things like candy, granola bars, cookies, pretzels, trail mix, sunflower seeds, fruit snacks, so, you know, kind of foods that wouldn't go bad, along with flavored drink mixes, pocket games and puzzles, crosswords, movies, magazines, those kinds of things. Next up is personnel, Mrs. Walters?
The Personnel Committee did not meet the month of October, and our next meeting is going to be Monday, November 5th.
Thank you, Mrs. Walters. Policy, Ms. Kildare?
We have a motion to approve talent policies. Number 006, number 108, 2101, number 246, number 311, number 704, number 806, number 810, number 81081, number 818, and number 918.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
And the next scheduled meeting for policy is November 5th.
The Upper Bucks County Technical School, Dr. Yernell?
Thank you. The Upper Bucks County Technical School Joint Operating Committee met on October the 18th, last Thursday. We had a number of things that occurred. We had a student of the month declared, as we usually do, Brianna Di Giacomo. She's in our welding program. She's a senior from Quakertown Community School District. If you haven't seen her work, it's quite amazing, and I recommend that you go. And during the open house, it'll probably be on display. She's combining a serious talent in art with a skill in welding that is pretty amazing, actually. And she's done very well at the Skills USA, hopes to place first this year. We certainly hope that she does as well. In terms of other things of note, the Rock Hill Filling Station, the restaurant up here on the ridge, is featuring the bakery's desserts, two of them, on weekends. So if you have a sweet tooth and are in need of that kind of thing and can't make it to the VOTEC itself to purchase their desserts, this is another option. 8th grade tours will take place at the vocational school on the 24th and 25th, so in the near future, this week. And the open house, the annual open house, is to occur on November 8th. As I recall, the timing is something like 5:30 to 7:30 or 8:00, so it's fairly early, but check on that if you're interested. The VOTEC will be having their Chapter 339 audit, and that's from the 31st to November 2nd. That's obviously an important and rather critical time for the staff and administration they're preparing for and dealing with that audit as it occurs. The facilities committee discussed at length a sewage treatment agreement with Nakamixon and the state. Action on that was deferred. The cost is quite high, certainly relative to what might be seen in the local community by residents or businesses. And unfortunately, we are one of the few users and probably the largest user. It's a facility that was overbuilt originally, and now we're paying the price for that overbuilding, if you will. In the finance committee, I gave a presentation on the infamous funding formula. I will be bringing that to the finance committee in November, and so you'll see that in detail. I won't go into it tonight. As here, the comprehensive plan draft was presented at the vocational school on Thursday night as well. We approved 16 or perhaps 17 students who will participate in the Farm Show, the Pennsylvania Farm Show, in early January. Certainly something worth going to and seeing. Usually, the weather is pretty atrocious, but you never know. And they have apparently purchased some very high-grade animals that will be shown at the show. And of course, our students get to groom and prepare those animals, and then I'm sure be heartbroken if they get sold or not continue in their care. Beyond that, I should note, we have a new JAC member, that's Danielle Bodnar. She's the executive director of the Upper Bucks County Chamber of Commerce. I also want to note, and I'm sure I'll be back with this information again, there will be a household hazardous waste collection, as there is every year in June. This year, it's scheduled for June 1st, 2019. Beyond that, I think there is a manufacturing job fair also being held at the vocational school, and that is on October 24th, 2018, and it's open to the public. If anyone's interested in going, I suggest they contact them for specific hours. I do note here that the open house is from 5:30 to 7:30 on the 8th. I also should note, because it was something that was credited, and I don't know whether Dr. Bolton should be the person receiving the credit or not, but someone at Penrich obviously has a plan for our 6th grade students to go and tour at the vocational school. And obviously, the folks there felt that that was really an optimum situation, something that they could go forward with. So thank you, whoever it was that arranged for that.
All credit goes to the middle school principals. Although I'll take it if you want it. So either one's fine.
That completes my report. Other than, the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 15th, 2018.
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. Any idea on what the two desserts are that they're bringing to the filling station?
Black forest cake is one of them. Apple strudel, I think apple strudel. I've had neither, but I've had some of the other desserts, which are very, very good. On that basis, I'd recommend them.
Okay, technology, Mr. Kraus?
Thank you. The Technology Committee did not meet the month of October. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 12th.
Act 48, Mrs. Walters?
Our first meeting for the school year is scheduled for Thursday, November 8th, 2018.
Okay, so we have a correction, that it's November 1st.
I think it's the 8th.
Okay, so it will be either on the 1st or the 8th. We'll post it on the website so everyone can see. Okay, next up is the Penrich Area Coordinating Committee, Ms. Thompson and Ms. Kildare?
We did meet, the Penrich Area Coordinating Committee, which is not a tongue twister, met on September 27th, 2018. We want to just bring it back to your attention that the meetings are open to the public, and they are held at the Penrich Community Center every time unless otherwise announced. So this time we met, we had...
So this time we met, we had Claire Black from Silverdale, myself representing this Penrich School District, and David Nyman from East Rock Hill, who also served as facilitator. We basically got a report from all of the municipalities that participated. Silverdale reported the status of their Green Street project. They received a grant for just over $147,000, but the bids for the project were more than double that grant allotment. So they are revisiting the project with their engineer to determine the source and the solution for that discrepancy. West Rock Hill reported that the Weiss Market Site improvements are underway. The traffic signal installation at the intersection of Route 313 and Croft Drive was estimated to be completed by the end of this month. The Trail and Sport Field construction of, at Elephant Road, have commenced, and they have reached a tentative agreement on a new police contract. East Rock Hill reported that the Bucks County Planning Commission will be assisting the township in updating their comprehensive plan. The Keystone Architects were approved to prepare construction drawings so that the township may bid out construction for their administration building and the Public's Work facilities. The Board is currently reviewing a proposal for a youth fishing pier on the east branch of the Perkyomen Creek between Blooming Glen Road and the Iron Bridge. Township is also working with the DEP and Congressman Fitzpatrick on providing safe drinking water in the Old Bethlehem Pike area. That area has been determined to be affected by the PFC pollution, and there is an ongoing conflict regarding the reopening of the East Rockville Quarry. So the township wanted to report that they are actively collaborating on those issues. And I attended and behalf of the school district, highlighted the changes to the school district, including the new appointments and hiring of the solicitor and the superintendent. And I also reported that the school board had approved a five-year contract with professional staff that was in line with our six-year capital project plan. And that's all we have for the PAC Committee meeting, and our next meeting will be this Thursday. Please come. This Thursday, October 25th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Penrich Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Okay, next up is Old Business. Does anyone have any old business?
It's okay.
Oh, sorry, they looked the same. They both said Penrich, and then a bunch of words. Okay, Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. Well, we already had a great explanation of some of the grants that the PCEF offers to our community. We met on October 6th, though, to talk about, you know, the ongoing plans. I wasn't at the complete meeting. I called in for some of the meeting, and we just shared ideas about fundraising opportunities. They also shared that they still need the membership that we talked about last month. So Shay, if you know any students, the PCEF actually has a couple of positions for student liaisons. So if you're interested in doing that, they would work with the foundation, helping out with, you know, the fundraisers. If they can attend the meetings, that would be great, but mostly what they're looking for is, you know, just the manpower, woman power, to staff the fundraisers and things like that, okay? And we are still looking for community members and at least one parent member for the Board. And then, you know, again, we had those great grants that were just awarded, and we'll be having a presentation here in December. Right, Dr. Bolton, did you want to add anything since you were at the rest of the meeting?
So the rest of the meeting really was talking about fundraising opportunities as well as dates, and those dates were covered in your report last month.
So that would be it, then? And I think the next meeting should be the first Saturday of November, November 3rd, and that takes place at 8:30 in the morning at the Penn Community Bank.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Now we're on to Old Business. Anyone have any old business? No? Okay, New Business? Nope? Okay. We're back to public comment. Any questions or comments from guests? Nope? Okay. Some announcements. An executive session will follow tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and security matters. The next school board reorganization, the next school board meeting is also the reorganization meeting, and it is scheduled for Monday, December 3rd. And that was, that's the only meeting that will still remain in this room, is just the main board meetings. All of the other committee meetings will be back at the District Office in the, in the board, the old boardroom. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Ms. Kildaree. All in favor? Opposed? All right, nine zero, we're out of here.